Welcome, everyone. The April 2nd, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. We are expecting one other member tonight. We want who's absent. I will just start off with introductions. I'm Brian Murphy, the Chair.
I'm Barry.
Rayco, planning board member.
Sue Brown, town planner.
Thank you. So what we, thank you for coming tonight and being interested. We'll hear your questions and concerns. We have a couple of items to present first to you. Then the board is going to have a brief discussion and then we'll open up for general questions and answers and whatnot. You may remember that we said we were waiting for the approval or the official review by the Commonwealth or zoning bylaw. And we have received written documentation and confirmation of that today. So I'm going to ask Sue to put that out. By the way, just as a formality, this is a reopened public hearing. I guess screen share for those who are remote. So this is from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Their former name was DHCD, but this is their new entity. And in essence, they have approved our bylaw with some suggestions that we take a further look at before we send it out to town meeting for consideration. Let's just, we'll go down to the first item. I'm not sure, do you know the shape files?
Yes, and Dylan is on too. He can help if you'd like, but that was just the technical part of the mapping that was done. And Dylan said he would take care of that.
Okay.
And most of these, he's already put into a new document.
The second, the second item was including some statements about how development and density and scale is allowed and how that density is calculated. The third is a, just so clarity and a couple of our definitions that they're looking for. The fourth does require a plan, that section requires a plan submission, but does not specify to whom the plan is submitted. Sounds like a very minor detail to be clarified. This is in the 40-page plus zoning document. Number five wants us to review a section of the site plan review, which we may have heard that, yes, we do have the ability to review this. Not like a special permit, but a site plan review does provide some review by this board. And they would like us to consult with town council to ensure that that section aligns with case law and whatnot. And that's fine. It's a, it's a process that has to get undertaken. And we knew that they would, town council would have to be consulted. We didn't want to jump the gun and have them look at it first and kind of burn taxpayer money and legal fees. Perhaps unnecessarily. And six, if a zoning amendment is required, please ensure that it occurs before applying for district compliance. So actually, the way, and I just saw this a couple of hours ago, my take is that I'm very pleased, and I think the board probably is as well, that there were so relatively minor changes to a comprehensive document. And more importantly, that what we had put in to specify the type of housing that is suggested, they basically have said that looks pretty good to them. And that was one section we were not sure if they would like the level of detail when we put in there, but they in fact have. So we will be taking care of this, but I just wanted you to know that the state did come back and it has given a relative approval with the items in order. This will be posted on the Planning Board website. You can peruse and whatnot, but. So the second item, many, there were a number of comments about the amount of funds that the town may have at risk if the zoning is not approved. And again, our compliance date is in December of 2025. We are ahead of the game. I think it's a great place for us to be. We have relative state approval of our baseline document. But we have Angus Jennings here tonight, the town manager, and he's, will speak to some of those grant opportunities that may be at risk. And then the document will, that incorporates that, will be posted on the Planning Board website as well. So, and I think he just wrapped it up a little earlier. The floor is yours, I guess.
Good, no, appreciate it, Brian. I appreciate the, I hope to get something to you for your packet for the end of last week. It ended up taking a little time, so I appreciate your patience with that. But I will, if you can bear with me for a couple of minutes, there's some detail here that I think is important. So I'm going to just kind of read it into the record. So the Plant Board's recent hearing regarding the proposal zoning, several residents asked questions about how much funding, state funding the town receives and what may be at risk if the town were to fall out of compliance to the M V P Communities Act. In my opinion, a response to the second part of the question, which is how much money is at risk, would be a bit speculative really for two reasons. For one thing, both the governor and the attorney general have stated in their public comments and or written statements that the scope of financial penalty can be expected to go beyond those state grant programs specifically identified in the act. Secondly, the pending litigation between the Commonwealth and the town of Milton does introduce some uncertainty regarding the act pending resolution by the courts. In other words, how enforceable are the penalties? So that's a bit speculative. So the first part of my memo is more dealing with the facts of what are the numbers? What are the figures that we perceived over the last few years? So I worked with the town accountant who put together the following summary numbers, and this will be posted tomorrow with all the detail. So I'll just give the bottom line numbers, which comprise cherry sheet revenue, Community Preservation Act matching funds, other state revenues, state grants, and Chapter 90, the highway monies. So in FY 2020, the state funding was about 717,000. FY 21, it was about 819. FY 22 was about 1.35 million. FY 23 was about 1.1 million. And FY 24, year-to-date is about 756,000, but projected, we expect to be about 2.1 million at the end of this fiscal year. And just as a quick aside, I do want to commend, you know, this reflects a lot of work of town staff, boards committees and commissions who have really been very proactive at seeking state grant funding and have been pretty successful in the last few years. So while these numbers are accurate as to the funds received, they actually don't fully account for the monies because just like town accountants are, would be expected to, genuinely counts this once the funds are in hand or contractually obligated. So I, so for instance, we received a $1 million Mass Works grant for the Middle Street Bridge in the fall. That's not actually going to be, even though it's under contract, we're not actually going to receive it until we start spending the money because it's a reimbursement grant. So that's actually not included in the numbers listed. Separately, actually, just in the last three weeks, we were awarded a separate $750,000 mass DOT small bridge grant, also for the bridge. And this funding is not included in the amounts above because even though it's been awarded and it's in writing, we're still in pre-contract phase and so it's not under contract. So as you would expect from a town accountant, you know, until it's in the bank, you know. So I just, that's where there's some nuance here. So as I review, so this next part is a little bit more subjective. So as I review their list of state grant programs that would be explicitly unavailable if what we raise in front of it with the act lapses, I see several that have in recent years contributed greatly to some of the town's highest policy priorities. That's the aforementioned Mass Works grant. I wish I got two of those, one in 2019 and one last year. Each one was for a million. One of them lapsed after about 300,000 because the time ran out, so about 1.3. Then the Somme Brook Land Acquisition that was approved by town meeting benefits from a $394,000 land grant. That's one of the specifically named programs that would be ineligible for. The River Road Resilience Planning Initiative, which is underway right now, that benefits from a $150,000 M V P Action Grant. So the act's guidelines also provide that their determination compliance may inform other funding decisions by various state agencies. And so this gets speculative, but that would include the $750,000 Small Bridge Grant, potentially. Green Communities Grants, which the town has been very, very proactive and successful at getting for various energy improvement projects around town. But over the last four fiscal years, we've got about $108,000 in Green Communities Grants. 911 training grants and support incentive grants to public safety and emergency management. We've gotten every single year for the last five fiscal years, that's totaled about 106,000. Council on Aging Formula Grants, we also get every year, that's totaled about 55,000. We got a firefighter safety equipment grant in 22, FY 22, for 22/5. And one thing I forgot to list here, but it's a pretty big grant in the current fiscal year. The Water Department got a $75,000 grant to support in the lead line inventory, which is a mandate for D E P. So if they hadn't gotten the grant, that would have been funded locally because it's mandated. So the third page has kind of a detailed breakdown, which probably left me remember some people care to see, but it's all there. So I wanted to say the governor has been quoted as saying that, quote, "If you don't comply with the act, then you're going to see us withholding as a state money for any number of programs that you're used to receiving money for." That includes for schools, it includes for roads and bridges, and includes for a whole host of things that are important to communities. So, end quote. If the Commonwealth were to extend the penalties for non-compliance to affect, for instance, Chapter 90 monies, roadway paving improvements, that could implicate more than $900,000 of state funding in recent years. It's not known if the governor's reference to funding, quote, "for schools," relates to Chapter 70 Education Funds, which offset Kentucky's budget to a pretty significant degree, or to school capital project funds administered by the Mass School Building Authority. But each of these is, offers existing and actual funding and or potential new funding that is and is expected to remain central for the town's operations and planning. So finally, you know, I want to be real clear on this. I write this memo in response to the questions raised at the public hearing with the intent to inform, but not to influence your decision as to how best to move forward. However, I do feel it's important for you as an elected board and for town meeting voters, if and when this matter comes before them, to make fully informed decisions. While some residents of the initial hearing expressed apparent unconcern regarding the potential loss of state revenues, this does somewhat, doesn't really jive with what I hear routinely regarding people's understandable concern about local property taxes. So in my opinion, there can really be no question that if the town were to become non-compliant with the act and if the Commonwealth were to fully implement the penalties that is either stated or suggested, it would result in either reduction in local levels of service or noticeable increases in local taxpayer expenses or both. And finally, and as a longtime town planner, I really want to be clear. It is not to suggest that adoption of new zoning is the only answer, only that any alternative approach should weigh all the resulting outcomes and that a decision should be made, all things considered.
Thank you, Angus. Thank you. I appreciate it and the effort you and your team have put together to do this. I also would say thank you very much for the bridge project is moving along and with these grants and whatnot. So all of what, it's an extremely detailed document and it will be available on the website tomorrow. You can peruse it and put questions to Sue and then she could get in there. Please don't call him or Angus, although I'm sure, you know, we're all taxpayers, you know. But feel free to utilize Sue and we'll try to funnel questions to you that may arise. But it's a terrific document. I think you'll all be pleased to see it. It at least helps with the understanding of what is apparently at risk here. As we know today.
Looks like Ray's got a.
Yes.
So I bet you're hesitant to do this, but I mean, if we're just having an elevator conversation with somebody in town, it's pretty clear to me that we're easily at risk of losing a million dollars and could be up to two, maybe even higher, $3 million if we're not compliant on an annual basis. Do you see that's kind of a fair ballpark? I think, I think it's in the ballpark. Yeah, I mean, my, no one knows what the courts are going to do. My guess is that the, the state has every right to apply discretionary, apply kind of criteria to discretionary funds. Some of what's here, like cherry sheet revenues, I don't know that it would go that deep, but based on some of the comments of the governor and the attorney general, as the town's financial, you know, chief financial officer, I certainly can't ignore that that could happen. So I think things like the grants, in my opinion, are very much at risk. Some of the more kind of core funding streams, Chapter 90, Chapter 70, cherry sheet revenues, I don't know if they go that deep, so, but I think, I think you're in, you know.
Just in the ballpark.
Yeah.
A million dollars is kind of a floor is reasonable.
I think that's, I think that's reasonable.
But how, how can you say that since the court, like the cases in October?
You identify yourself, I'm sorry.
An Aaron away from Main Street. And I thought exactly what they're going to talk about in October is how, whether or not that's legal to take away.
Yes, and we're going to be talking about that in just a moment. Good point. But we, this is, this is where it is today. Based on what has been a known.
Well, there's a lawsuit, so I don't think we can say what.
Well, it's known in terms of what the state has said they would do. Whether, whether the court will agree or not is, yes, clearly debated.
Well, I think the state initially said that they were just no longer going to give funding and then they ended up taking stuff away, which they actually didn't write into the law at all. So it's been a little bit, like I think, I think it's really nebulous exactly what, even whether state is.
I don't disagree.
Yeah, of course it is. I mean, we're, we're trying to guess the future here.
Right.
And, and you know, eventually we're going to be called to make a decision. The town is going to be called to make a decision. And even then, we'll be making that decision on the best information we have available.
Well, there'll be a court, a Supreme Court case decision that should probably help us out quite a bit in October.
Yes, but even then, this is always the case when you're making a decision. You make it on the best information available.
Right.
And I think right now, this is the best information we've got available. When, you know.
But that's not right now because October will know.
I'm saying right now, in October, we'll have more information. I mean, I did, you know, right at the beginning of the memo, I did say this litigation creates a huge question.
If we're not counting until 2025, maybe we just wait and see what happens, right?
We're, we're going to be talking about stuff like that.
I didn't commit justice. We really want to get Angus as a prior commitment.
Oh, I've got another 20, 20.
Yeah, but yes, we will entertain some questions here. You, ma'am?
I mean, Karen Gasky, we're new to the area, Maple Street, just in October. Hi, Erin. We're trying to catch up to smaller town, you know, stuff. But I mean, maybe you can answer this, but I have similar questions about, it sounds like you're just identifying the possible risk right now. But is it true, or maybe you're going to get to this, that you won't actually make any decisions until we know, until after?
Let's, let's hold off on that.
Okay, sure.
We'll be discussing that in a moment.
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions really that speak to what Angus has presented?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm Brad Gifford from Harrison. You mentioned a million or, and right, you're speculating maybe about the other three. But how many, how does that affect individual taxpayers? So how many households do we have in town and what would that be per household?
Let's see, the annual operating budget is about 18 million. So if, so what I said at the end is I think you'd see if, you know, we're also definitely speculating on how much money could be lost, but I think the amounts are significant enough.
Oh, we had to use, okay, that's five percent for like 1,008, sorry, grants the whole, the whole place. 1 million is 5% of 18 million. So if we were to absorb it, it'd be a 5%.
Yeah, I mean, I think. You could do it as, whatever, about 4,000 households?
No.
No.
No. 16.
Okay, all right. Can I make my own rest? Call it 2,000 households. Let's say if you afford a million, so a million divided by 2,000, same thing as 1,000 divided by two, which is the same thing as 500 bucks a house. But, but I think the other thing to keep in mind is with Prop 2 and a half, it shouldn't be assumed that if that money went away, that those same services would be provided, right? Because the town's limited on its ability to raise taxes year after year. So it may be that, for instance, an override, like to sustain the level of service and make the same investments without the state money, you might need to go to an override to do that. So you might, it might not hit people in the wallets as much, but it might reduce the level of service. Exactly. And, and every, every year, town meeting, vote in a budget and go over all the line items. And you can call uphold and there would be discussion on that. I assume if we were to lose a bunch of revenue, that would make town meeting all more fun because it would be a lot more effective.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions just related to the financial implications?
I have another.
Yes, go please. You're here, that's great.
So I, I'm still sort of confused when I look at this paper because it says that you're planning for, third, that all of your financials are based on 30, but you're zoning for 87. And I just want to know how to sort of, not rate this budget stuff, but that doesn't make a lot of sense to me how you could plan for 87 and know that a developer isn't going to come in and build 87 homes.
The 87 is the number that's required to meet the state guidelines.
But if you zone for it, how do you know somebody won't?
Because they will not build a septic system.
How do you know?
Because it costs multi-millions of dollars.
How do you know they won't spread?
They won't, they won't. It is physically, financially.
You bet your life on it.
Absolutely.
You would go to the state and say, I know 87 homes aren't going to be here.
It's not going to happen. And so therefore, people will revert to, we have to do for Title V, septic regulations, and it's on bedroom count.
How do you know they won't build apartment buildings? How do you?
This is a multifamily, so it could be a small apartment.
Multi-level, I mean, builders have, can get pretty savvy with their money.
Yes, but if you're building to meet septic guidelines with Title V in this town, you're typically in a 30, 35 units.
Bringing your own septic.
For multi-million dollar investment, the numbers don't work. And, and we will, you know, develop a, a guy, a number. We'll, we'll have an engineer come up with a number, but.
If it's not feasible, the numbers won't work.
The state, however, says, because you have this area zoned for the 87, if someone comes in and builds 30, 35, or builds 20, you meet the criteria that's set forth.
Well, we could meet the criteria if you put it over a shopping plaza. Like, if you really don't care about having 87 homes, then why not?
Well, that, that, that could be a philosophical thought perhaps.
Because it's just confusing to me. You want 87 homes or you don't want 87 homes? You want lots of housing or you don't want?
87 is what the state requires for this town.
But do you want that or do you not? Like, you mean, it's kind of pretty amazing because you're saying you want.
We could never change that number. That is what the state is telling us, based on our current housing inventory, the formula they have derived, we're required to zone for 87.
I get it, I get it.
You, you asked what we want.
Right.
Well, the town will decide what the town wants. The planning board, we're just trying to help. I think in the end, what, what a lot of people in town will want will be to comply with the law, the minimum possible thing to do, to comply with the law, so that we don't lose revenue and we don't enter into this long people fight.
Then why do we do a handover done, which is they put it over a shopping plaza?
So we have to comply with the law and what we, as the planning board, is doing and through our consultants and through all kinds of input, is trying to figure out how we can meet the law and not get in trouble with the state. Now, it, what I, I back up what Brian says. I think if you talk to any developer, trying to get 87 units on a lot, with, you, you have to have some sort of a sewage treatment plant for that development. And that's very expensive. And in the end, the developer is trying to make a buck. So a developer who really wanted to do that number of units, I say, I think, would choose to do that.
That's a calculation.
Yes, would choose to do that in another town where they don't have to build a sewage treatment. So, so am I willing to put my life on it? No.
Yes.
Am I very, very sure? Yes, I am.
I will also, end over the sewage system. Many of these towns have sewage systems. So the developer has to be able to plug into that sewage system. And then there will also be capacity issues that, and somebody, Endover or Merrimack or Newburyport is all going to have a say. Well, you know, Mr. Developer, that's very nice, but we can't handle that flow.
I don't, I don't know. Have you talked to all developers ever? Because I feel like if you zone for 87, you got, you got a man.
Erin, I sold real estate and mostly in West Newbury for over 40 years. And there are very few, there were no developers, zero, who were willing to stick their necks out far enough to develop the parcels in town that are not developed right now. There, there's very few places in town that we will see additional building because the water table is so high, the soils are so poor, the conditions vary all over town. But the two parcels we've identified that we want to change the zoning on look like they could handle what the state requires that we do. The plans that Dodge and Flinker have prepared and that were shown at the public forums show very aesthetically pleasing structures that you're not going to mind looking in.
I'm sorry, but how do you presume to know what I would like or not like?
We asked the town and dozens of people came and expressed an opinion and they processed through the things that most people thought they wanted to see. And they were.
You never, you never, even though your town meetings from January said that you were going to notify the Butters, the Butters have never been notified and they've never.
Erin, everybody's been notified.
No, we have not been notified.
There have been public hearings.
From this, from the hearing.
Yeah, all right.
Yes, you, you did, you already commented Merrill Street. You mentioned that, you know, if it was 97 unit, 87 units, the builder wouldn't be able to afford any type of sewer or anything like that as well. Governor Healy has actually mentioned that Upton was awarded 3.6 million to extend water and sewer infrastructure to support private development with residences, townhouses and potential new development. So they do have money through Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities and they also have it through the Housing Works Infrastructure Program. They've been awarding that to multiple towns, $6 million in grants to communities to extend sewer for future development.
We have no sewer.
We don't have it, right? But you can still, we don't have it. Yeah, but you can get it, you can get it.
We can get it.
They said they would pull it in for the community.
Well, let me just, let me just jump in. I, I appreciate the, the concerns, right? I do, and I, I'm with you. And I I'm with you. Um, and I don't mean to pull out rank or anything like that, but I've been a civil engineering professor for three decades. And um I'm a structural engineer, I'm not an environmental engineer, but I participate in all kinds of environmental engineering forums. To do a sewage treatment plant, you need a space. And you need to bring all the pipe to that place, you have to process the sewage. And then you have to take the treated wastewater and you have to, you have to put it someplace. And where that tends to go is the Marimac River. Um, there are other things that can be done in different parts of the world where they have low water table. You can do groundwater recharge, et cetera. So what would have to happen here, you couldn't do a sewage treatment plant on either of these sites. Uh, there's just no space for it, there's no physical space for it. Sewer treatment plants, you need a primary clarifiers, well, there's tar screening, then there's primary, then there's secondary treatment. It all takes up a lot of acreage. So I think it's quite, I think it's quite accurate to say that even if the town wanted to do a sewage treatment plant. We would be hard pressed to find a place to put one.
And then Warren Warren Hilli also just mentioned last week that. You don't need to build on these, you just need to zone in.
That's right.
That's important to understand too.
We've tried to make that clear to you.
No, but it's you're 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 choosing two properties, one property which is up for sale and if it's sold, it will be built.
Yes.
It will be built, okay?
It may not be built with multifamily housing.
If it's sold, it will be.
No, it won't.
If it's sold, or if I don't mean, somebody would if it would have your eye on it.
It's already there.
Somebody, somebody would buy it with with a plan in their mind and not a hard drawn plan. To figure out how best to build on that land to make the most profit.
Do you have a plan? Does anyone have a plan?
No, we we showed you what our consultant showed that would meet.
Hasn't somebody given you a proposed plan for that property?
No, and then one last thing. You mentioned it looks at that, it looks nice to the eyes. It says it's gonna be a three-story building and it says it's gonna be the roof line every fifty feet, a roof line has to change. That's a large building and that's fifteen units per an acre. Okay, fifteen.
I've seen the plan, sir.
Correct.
And.
When you put single family houses up.
That's one option.
That's that's one option.
And you know, we do keep track of these things along the way. And the other, the other safety net that we have here in West Newbury is that we have stringent Conservation Commission guidelines. That limit, excuse me, excuse me. That limit where construction can take place, anywhere near a body of water. There are so many tributaries to streams that are critical watersheds. We have a very good conservation commission. I served on it for twenty years. But they keep places so that you don't have water in your backyard.
Right, so thank you, but why would you choose a piece of property that's available to be built, okay? To be buildable and available when other towns are going to fall suit, which was discussed in the last meeting. To take up an area that can rezone that's already more expensive and it's not available to be built.
I I agree. Um, in addition to the board's obligation to um. To assist the town in complying with state law. Another goal of the town, which has been stated repeatedly in various planning documents and. Through the actions of other boards and committees over the years, is the desire to create uh housing units in town. Particularly housing units that um, well, just the the supply of housing units. In order to bring down the cost of anything in Econ one oh one. You put more of whatever it is into the market and it will have an effect potentially of lowering the price across the board. Um, these are not, this is not affordable housing. I don't want anyone to think that when I say that it might have an effect on lowering the price. But there is generally felt to be a desire in town to make housing units available. So that's why we're not.
But it is one for us. It's one for us, the community decide versus the state dictating to us how to build our community.
Yeah, and also not in that scale.
And and I think the state has already made this decision.
We didn't make it.
We made the decision, but we could abide by the state. We don't need to make a decision today. We can hold off on this. And then secondly, when we do make a decision, we can do it like other towns, which Maury Healy has approved as well. Which is to put it into an area that it's already been developed, which would cost more. To for a developer to put eighty eighty-seven units in, or forty or thirty in there, because our our town can't absorb that.
Well, uh uh there there are a bunch of issues here. Uh I I hear what you're saying. I think there's a dance that you're playing.
Not a dance.
Yeah, uh well, let let me finish my analogy.
Go ahead.
Sort of a dance that you're playing with the state between compliance and doing something that obviously um.
Look at where North Andover just did. They placed their overlay district right over the market basket in the Amazon District Center.
Right, yeah.
We don't have that, we don't like that.
We do, uh it's not Grant and Dole, I'll let them take this one.
Um, so, oh, and and then just, just uh, just to sum up, to back up what Deb was saying earlier. Um, something I've noticed, I've been on the planning board for a while now, a couple of decades, I think. Um, one thing that I've noticed, we've all noticed, is all the really nice spots for building have been taken up. All the easy lots are already developed. That's why I think right now, if you had a lot you could build on. And and just a lot with, and not even, I think it's gotta be like three hundred thousand dollars, ten, forty thousand dollars. In this town, just to have a lot that you could build one house on. All the easy spots have been developed and um and that's why. Developers, again, trying to make a dollar, that's how the free market works. Um, for something with a tremendous number of units would be looking elsewhere. And yeah, is that speculation? Yes, it is. Is that, is that well informed speculation? Yes. Do I presume that everybody in town is gonna, if somebody develops something, is everybody gonna like it? Absolutely not. If it were being, if 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 a big building with fifteen units in it went in next to my house, would I be happy about it? Probably not.
Probably not.
Would I end up, what, is it likely that I would end up liking a lot of the people who moved in there? Absolutely.
It's not about liking, it's about, like, we live in an environmental crisis right now where. You know, there are coyote and deer and owl and and eagle and there's lots of other places in the state to build houses. That are also more easily accessible to often. It doesn't make sense for us to sacrifice this beautiful land and have lots of amazing animals. When we don't need to, to your point. We could, Grant and Dole, take, you take it.
All right, who are you?
I'm Grant, I'm from Dole Place.
You're listening?
Grant, Grant Stovall. Um, I appreciate the work that the planning board has put into this. I do, I do not envy your role, but I definitely admire the work that you're putting in. And you guys have put in a lot more work and my thank you to the town manager for figuring out the finances. That addressed a pretty big question that a lot of us had last time is digging deeper on the non-compliance side. If we were to go towards the non-compliance, so a couple of questions about compliance. Are your, so far, the proposed response is really well thought out, well mannered and taken consideration. Complying, which is your duty as elected officials.
To bring it to the town, the town will decide.
Right, and you are supposed to follow to the letter of the law. That's your sworn obligation and I appreciate the diligence and effort to do that. Um, a few of you have mentioned going above and beyond following the letter of the law. And you're seeking to follow the intent of the law. It's not incumbent upon you to do so. The intent can be debated philosophically all night long. We can meet this heavy-handed demand from the Healy administration. Or a half-baked plan left over from the Governor Baker's administration and debate the intent of it all night. That's not our role here. That's that's not what we should be doing. Following the letter of the law to the intent, I think is what some of us are mentioning here. If it's our job to find a good overlay district that meets that criteria. The existing retirement community or fifty plus meets that. Putting it over top of right here downtown city offices, the um, the, you know, the whole facility here. The monastery up the road, the the new home uh community right down the road. Those all meet it. It's buildable. There's nothing more valuable than something that has been built. It's just financially unapproachable to a lot of developers. I I appreciate the thought that has been put into the sewage treatment facility and the financials there. It costs four and a half million. These units, eighty-seven of them, let's say they sell for six fifty. That's only a ten percent comp. That's fifty-one thousand dollars per unit that a developer has to make up. The developer can do that.
Not happening.
It's ongoing operation as well, it's a.
It's somewhat, and so you you could, you could argue that it's gonna be.
Half and it's a little personal challenge.
It is logistically really challenging to figure out how to get that water back down to the river. But we would be meeting the state's law, therefore open up to grants that are then available from the state. To increase the infrastructure and help aid in some of those costs. So I mean, the the developer takes on four million, the state takes on another three million, seven will get it done somehow.
Not even close. Well, I.
We know.
Uh but I I I do, I do take it, the the there is this, and I think it's a reasonable thing for. For people here to to be putting forward. And instead of proposing an overlay district and a and a lot where things could be built. What you're suggesting is to uh put the overlay district over Ocean Meadow or someplace where it's less likely. Because you'd have to do mono issue.
Yeah, I I think I'm proposing two things, yes, uh put it over something that would be cost prohibitive to do. So we follow the letter of the law. And if we also feel that it's incumbent upon us as a town to also interpret and follow the intent of the law, we can do that. Independent of compliance. So if we wanna make a more accessible, affordable and diverse community. We can do that without opening ninety units in one year. We could, we could create other zones. That would make building attractive. We could, independently of the law, we meet the letter, file it in books, come on, and now.
Great, just telling us that we've been doing that all along.
You you have, and I'm, I mean, I'm a recipient of that. And you re- you accepted a reduced street frontage from two hundred thousand.
Oh, well, how how the town, and here I'm gonna get a little forward, uh the town in its wisdom approved uh um. Accessory dwelling units, which is, which is a huge step. The town is headed by a right forever uh duplex units. Um, so I I think the spirit of West Newbury, the people of West Newbury, I think the heart is in the right place. And I and I hear you about making those changes that results in incremental change over time. Which I think is easier for everybody to stomach than having something jammed down our throats.
Yeah, it's also easier for us to afford and scale as well. Because what the state's asking us to do is increase our town size by ten percent. And if a developer opens those doors, it could happen in one year. And what I'm proposing is, okay, we increased by ten percent, so two percent a year over five years for better planning than the heavy hand in state. So my concern is, we have a very well-intentioned, well-thought-out, well-mannered response to a not well thought out. Not well-intentioned and not well-mannered law that's being put on us. I don't think we should meet the heavy hand with such grace and honor. I think we should follow to the letter of the law. And then take what we believe is the intent and also implement that independent of the law.
I'm 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 smiling now, and and I because I appreciate the way you put the language in.
In, if I did mention, Westbury did the same thing, which um they made an existing building, their future housing, they just zone for it. Maury Healy had mentioned, who I think was on W and U R, mentioned that the M B T F just requires communities to rezone. It actually doesn't require them to build any housing, that in her quote, okay?
No, no, we know that.
Like, putting it into an area that's, such as Anaps, that will be built, like putting it into the fifty-five older area. Or another area like that's already existing, it's, it would be, as mentioned, cost prohibitive. And or not to say it couldn't happen, but it would be much more expensive for a developer to do that.
And just put the control back and and the.
Right, so I think um, and we'll circle back, Boyd wants to just have a discussion here. Um, and it has to with a legal case that is um been brought, I think. We have all become aware of it more through, I think, general media outlets and whatnot. That Milton is being sued by the the Attorney General's Office. And I don't know if they come to suit, I've read something they might, whatever, but there there is a court date by the Supreme Judicial Court. It goes right to the top court in Massachusetts, um in sometime in October. I I do not have the date. Maybe not one set. Um, and and I, you know, I think that that certainly is something that, you know, I'm concerned as a board member. That we don't know what the outcome of that is going to be. Uh, they may affirm the current situation. They may say something in the middle, we need to change something, or they may put a stay on the entire uh. A package, which personally I think is unlikely, but. There's uncertainty and I think we all appreciate uncertainty and, you know, there's there's. Perhaps good reason to say we need to just wait until this court case is plays out. Particularly because we are not required to meet this until twenty twenty-five. The cities and towns that have to meet it this year, they have a different decision to make. In terms of whether they're going forward or or not uh this year, and I think Newbury Port is in that situation. Uh, uh, right now. Um, although in their case, they'll probably just rezone some areas adjacent, more adjacent to the train station and call it a day.
Yeah.
Uh, exactly. So maybe easier than I'm thinking down there. But uh, so I wanted to hear what other board members in our forum here, your thoughts. And then I will get to questions at the end of the quarter.
Well, even when a of any new bylaw passes, any at town meeting, the Attorney General's Office always has to review it and that takes a few months. It's typical after a spring town meeting for a new bylaw not to be approved till July or even later. Um, so in any case, we always have anticipated specific review of our bylaw by the Attorney General's Office. Um, and given that this gives us kind of a free opportunity. To to piggyback onto um, you know, things that will be found through someone else's lawsuit, that will be the first piece of case law. Around this new new state statute. Um, I think we'll learn things from it. I think our proposal is sound and I think we have some time, which we built into our schedule. We started this process last June, I think, or May with the first few meetings with our consultants. Um, we can make adjustments as we go along and then as we learn more. I think there may be further clarification from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities as well. Um, so I might be in favor of continuing to work at uh, give a new input as it comes in. And see how that, but I'm willing to be persuaded otherwise, the wisdom of my fellow.
No, I, I mean, I I'm not sure. I I wanna bring forward something that if we're gonna come back in the. Well, I don't, who knows, it's gonna pass, but then have to get radically changed again because we didn't have the wisdom to wait. And I think from where I'm standing, I'd rather see what our hard legal opinion is on this and uh. And then come forward. And then there's lots of good questions and whatnot. We we have the, we have the very. You know, a good plan according to the state, and I know that may not meet the criteria, but it's a, we have a plan. And uh.
Yeah, I'm I'm really glad that we started worrying about this uh as soon as we heard about it. Waiting for uh last spring. Um, because I think that puts us in a, in a, in a good situation now. Um, if if we were only starting to worry about this now, we have a lot less information, it'd be a lot worse. We, we, I wouldn't be able to sit here with time and say the things that I've said. So I'm I'm really glad that we got a good start. And yeah, I think bringing it to uh spring town meeting, well, town meeting. I think that would be a mistake at this point because there is so much more information that will come and we still have that buffer. But we still have the buffer. We know it's gonna take a while for things to turn around. Yeah, one of the things that could result from all this lawsuit stuff going on is that. They could roll back all kinds of deadlines on us too. So it's, it's, you know, it it does, it doesn't make sense to me to bring it to.
You're right, I should have mentioned the other, you, one never knows in a case like that, they may, they say, well, we'll affirm this or that, but we'll also extend deadlines. So again, we're.
And 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 you know, the the two lots that we've identified here as reasonable lots, maybe too reasonable. Um, we don't know what's gonna happen with those. Um, we don't know what's gonna happen with those. Um, you you people could sell, bill, put conservation restrictions on them. There's all kinds of things.
For it.
You know, I I'm fortunate. I live on Bailey's Lane and the land of.
What's your question a little bit, sir?
Land out of End of Bailey's Lane, uh, the the development rights were purchased. From the owners, the Merrill family, by the state. Because that APR law was in place and funded at that time. Um, you, so we don't, we don't know what's gonna happen to these. Lots either, so.
Well, I will tell you to, don't worry.
Okay, yeah, so I, I, I think, I think, I think it's too soon to bring it to the town.
And I respectfully disagree.
Okay.
Um, for so many reasons, West Newbury needs some housing that we don't have. We have no multifamily housing. We have no rental apartments to speak of. We now have no place. For the people who we rely on to do things for us, our our teachers, our nurses, our firefighters, our police officers. Uh, the people who service your car, the people who do your nails, the people who cut your hair. Most of these people are are coming to us to work here for us, but they don't live in town. They don't, many of them drive miles and miles to do your landscaping or to to. To take care of the things that we are accustomed to having people take care of. And a town needs that section of people who can do stuff. When, if if you saw the chart that showed the demographics in town, we've got a lot of people our age. We've got some kids, although the school population is declining. What we don't have are the wage-earning. Young people who are moving into town because they can't find anything. How many people can afford a starter tiny home for half a million dollars?
Also don't have the businesses here, that's why.
Excuse me, excuse me.
They don't work here. They.
We'll get back to your questions, that's okay.
But also, we have key.
Please, 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 let's just, this is a board discussion on.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, I also serve on the Affordable Housing Trust. And it has been made very clear to those of us on that committee that the town needs housing that we don't have here yet. And when a development goes in, if it is something like the Daily Drive or Bolensby or Ocean Meadow. The developer either has to create affordable units. Or put money into a fund that is building the Affordable Housing Trust Fund at this point. You voted out of C P C funds and um. The, can't remember what it's called, Wendy, the the what the developer pays.
Inclusionary.
Inclusionary zoning funds, thank you. Um, toward developing affordable housing somewhere in town. So some of these units, I would hope would be. Quote-unquote affordable. That doesn't necessarily mean low income, but it means that there's an opportunity to not build. Three thousand square foot million dollar homes. Um, I think arguably both, well, I think done less than NAP. I think NAP. Already has enough in- infrastructure on it um to demonstrate that you could put some hu- a housing project in there that could be aesthetic. But smaller sized units, one and two bedroom units, some family units because the state does not want things to be built. That are exclusively for adults. Um, but I think that this. Leg- legislation has given the town the opportunity to consider what might be done with those properties. Um, redevelopment into what you'd most like to see them be. And for my taste, it would be. Places where we could put in some multifamily units of some aesthetic sense. That wouldn't defend, it's not gonna look like a factory, it's not gonna look like Palm Beach Towers of condos, but um. We we will work very hard to make whatever happens there work in every way. Thank you.
It was the vote.
We need to make. Yes, is this the time you wanna do that?
Well. I think the sentiment of the board is that, and and I will move um, it's an unofficial motion, um, that that we defer the uh. The consideration at this Springtown meeting. Um, so you can be assured of that. Um, I think you heard there's three members here in in favor of that. Um, but I do think it's important that we continue and gather input and whatnot uh from here and there's some questions in the uh. And on the virtual side. So I'll start here. John Sarkis.
Yes, my name's John Sarkis. Uh, I used to live here in town and.
In full disclosure, John used to be a member of the Planning Board.
Was a member of the board and also in full disclosure, I have an interest in the NAP property. Uh, to speak to the matter of the um lawsuits. I would, uh, if I'm on the board today, I would really like to get my arms around the uh. Ramifications, possible legal ramifications of the lawsuit. Uh, as I understand it, there are two lawsuits. The Attorney General has filed uh a claim against Milton. To enforce the law. And Milton fired back. Uh, with a lawsuit claiming that the Attorney General may not have the authority to enforce the law. But that doesn't mean the law isn't enforceable. So before. In other words, is the state legislature allowed to enforce the law? It's a question of what agency has the exact authority to enforce this law. Milton did not in any way challenge, from what, from the articles that I've read, did not in any way challenge. The validity of the state to withhold funding. That was left off the table. And from what I also read, Milton is also looking for a way to now comply with the law. So I would not. Discount. The the heavy hand that the state has. I have read all that went into determining whether or not the state has the authority. To mandate something like this. It does not violate Home Rule. In fact, the board was permitted the ability, or the towns are permitted the ability. To craft their own legislations within the framework. And I think the board did a fantastic job doing this to be, Dylan is really to be commended. Uh, he carefully crafted design guidelines. That would in no way permit uh uh something that you'd see in in Pedro Lawrence. Uh, a very large building. When you apply those regulations. What happens is we end up with something that really looks like West Newbury. Um, it it was, he did a very, very good job. Uh, I didn't think it was gonna be as he, he made it look easy, I guess, and I know it wasn't. Uh, I've done an analysis uh uh to determine how that set of regulations. Would affect the NAP property. I've drawn a plan. I'd be happy to share it with you.
That'd be awesome. I'd love to see it.
So what did you come up with as sort of profitable number of units?
So. Every developer views things differently. In in, you know, some guys, you know, love big buildings. With smaller units and some because they're, they 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 know how to build them. Knowing how to build them doesn't mean you know how to develop that pro- profitable way. It's two different things. Um, nor does that mean that that there is even a market for that type of unit here in town. I did a detailed study statewide to find a twenty-five unit building. Built in a rural community like West Newbury. And I could find one. And there's a real reason for that is, for example, I looked at towns like Bolton. And Harvard, whose demographics and landscape are very much like West Newbury. Um, there's nothing like that built there. And the reason is, it's highly speculative. I would not put my money up to build forty-five units in, say, two buildings here in town. I would never do that. Uh, if if this.
With all due respect, if you are a developer, you could tell us anything right now. If we, if you have the money, you'll use it there, honey.
Excuse me. Right, thank you.
If this were Stoner or Wakefield, you could be certain that I would, I would do that down there. But it's not been tested around here. It's a highly speculative venture and getting the money to do that is another matter. Uh, what we do know that has worked in in West Newbury is duplex units have been desirable. And they're, they're desirable to to the buyers. Uh, in a certain demographic, not really families, maybe young, starting up families, but they don't stay there. Uh, they're also, they're also desirable to builders because they don't involve sprinkler systems. You don't have to build all twenty-five units in one shot. You can build them as you go. So the capital outlay is a lot easier to absorb, a lot easier to get the funding for. The risk is significantly less and your market is somewhat proven. The notion of the um. Sewer treatment plant. Is um almost cockamamie. Uh, frankly, uh, with all due respect. The amount of space that would be needed to fit that on the site and the. Environmental logistics, the construction, you you have to feed a certain number of units on day one. Into that treatment plant in order for it to be functional. Can't do that unless you have a whole mess of them built and pre-sold. So you need sort of an interim plan to handle your septic. To where you get to that point. We don't have land in town to handle that interim plan. We have no way of doing that, especially on a very small site like that. So. That's really off the table. And what that does, to answer your question, Ray, is that limits you to ten thousand gallons a day of effluent. Ten thousand gallons a day of effluent. Anything more than ten thousand gallons requires treatment. Under ten thousand, it can be handled through conventional septic mes- methods like we are all used to here in town.
For how many bedrooms?
Ten thousand gallons handles ninety bedrooms.
Thank you.
So that could be, for example, forty-five two-bedroom units. That could be thirty-three bedroom units. But knowing what I know about the market in this area. Having studied the the real estate at the NAP's property. It would be this developer's choice to do something along, along the lines of a thirty-unit development. Uh, no more than three bedrooms per unit. In duplex, possibly triplex fashion. Possibly quad at the most. But the the drawings that I have. Show duplexes and one large farmhouse-looking structure containing possibly four to six units in it. It'd be one big farmhouse, brings away a barn attached to it, and the barn would have the dwelling units in it as well. That'd be placed at the, at the high point of the site. Like an old farmhouse would have been back in the day. So, uh, yeah, you're right, I'm a, I'm a developer, but I've I've been here. I think everybody. I I've coached the kids here in town, you know, through soccer and all that. Uh. You know, everybody knows if 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 this is what I wanna do, if I say this is what I'm gonna do, this is. If this goes through, that's what I would do. It's a safe thing to do. I can get the money for it and I can get the clients for it. And um, the other, the other important thing to understand about the guidelines that the. The board and Dylan came up with was that it largely mirrors. Regulations that we already have in place. In fact, the design guidelines associated with the. M B T A zoning as proposed are more stringent than the town's. O S R D guidelines. They go, they go into areas of architectural control that in my opinion go too far. And I disagree with that, but they afford significant security to the community. Such as control over the uh uh the shape of the structures, height of the structures. There's, there's massing requirements which are not required under O S R D. If the property goes to O S R D. Something could be built even bigger than what's required or limited by by the the um. Uh, M B T A zoning. Uh, fenestration control, uh, material control, placement of doors are controlled. Garage sizes are controlled, placement of garages are controlled. None of that is controlled under the regulations we currently have in town. If the property gets developed under O S R D, developer will be more likely to do what he wants to do. Not what these guidelines require. So, you know, the long and the short of it is. Fitting anything, applying those guidelines and fitting anything more than roughly thirty, thirty-two units. Is uh on that site is is uh, it's so difficult that it's unlikely. And applying all of the factors that we have to consider. Marketability, financial feasibility. Borrowing money from a bank, time it takes to sell. Cost to construct, you know, all of that. You know, the more likely result is a thirty-unit townhouse development. Uh, again, I would like to to request the board, before it decides to or not to take this to town meeting, I would strongly get. Suggest gaining a deeper understanding of of the lawsuits at hand. Cause I don't think it's possible that the lawsuit could overturn the implementation. It may refine certain matters of it or simply define who has authority, you know, to enforce.
Yeah, I.
Thanks, thank you, John.
You'd like to say, have you done? Have you done any protesting? Do you know that there's a place to put as?
Yes.
Um, as a giant septic system?
Correct, I have.
Thank you.
I just wanna confirm one of the things that John said. Milton hasn't sued the Attorney General back. But they have filed a response. I was just looking up the Boston. Yeah, and it's not a countersuit technically. Um, but yeah, they're challenging, like you said, they're challenging the authority. And they they think that the M B T A, the Community Act has gone too far, over overstepped the Attorney General's authority to do it. And then, yeah, who who would enforce it? So you you had the basic things, right? Yeah.
Yeah, but I, like I said, I strongly su- suggest having an attorney of ours uh really look into this first.
Thank you, John. Um, just to clarify on the the alphabet soup that John is talking about. The uh guidelines in in our town, open space residential design, O S R D, uh, we also call them open space preservation relevant. Um, we have two developments in town, actually three, that were developed under those guidelines, one being Ocean Meadow. Second is Daily Drive and the third is off of Wedstone Street, the uh called Bolensby Lane, Carriage Development. Those are all developed under the guidelines that we currently have in town uh for zoning protection and development. So, uh, some other questions, then we'll get to a couple of here.
I would just say in response to John, um, I don't think anybody's expecting that this lawsuit is gonna upend the world. I think we're looking for. Any mod-, you know, modifications that would affect us and therefore allow us to make some changes in the rules in there.
Yeah, and and deadlines could roll. And I I think even if we were to spend a lot of money right now on attorneys. Again, it would be speculation as to how this stuff is gonna shake out. I think everybody's waiting to see how this stuff is gonna shake out.
Thank you.
I agree with you quite, thanks, thank you. So I have a couple of personal concerns, but also wanted to speak on behalf of the town personally. I appreciate the work that's gone into considering this, that, and so that, because I think that that represents. I appreciate the work that's gone into considering this, that, of it, because I think that that represents a concern of the town, and I think you guys have done a good job of thinking through that. And as a developer, I appreciate you hearing the town's concerns as well. So that concern at least is satiated for the moment, but the, um, I'm still thinking through the economic impact and then infrastructure impact and so, um, Ms. Hamilton, you had mentioned the economic impact. Obviously, you referenced Economic 101. In order to drive down the price, in order to, I, I'm sorry, um, in order to drive down the price, you have to increase supply and inventory and when you start interfering with the free marketplace as a governing body, you abandon the free market pricing structure. And so you would have to artificially suppress the price by putting into regulation uh, supply, you know, um, in order to drive down that price. So you're abandoning the free market model at that point. And I think that the accessibility to West Newbury is already regulated in that way. And so I don't know that I necessarily buy into and believe that we have to be accessible to people in other income brackets in order to attract a hairdresser that we don't have a, a barber shop or a hairdresser need for, or additional mechanics, or to allow people to drive less than five miles. I don't know that that's a big, huge concern. Maybe it is. I just don't see that. And anecdotally, I, I just haven't seen it. You can apply general concepts from other towns about increased diversity, increase, um, different ways of access. I just don't know that that need is here.
It's, it's everywhere. This is a national crisis. This is, it's, it's what motivated a lot of this regulation.
But this isn't national, this is West Newbury. So you're applying a general method to control that general diversity across the country to West Newbury.
Let me respond, as I've brought up economics at my own peril, I guess. First of all, the town isn't gonna develop anything.
I understand.
Private landowners own land. They have the ability to do with it what they will. So anything that happens on any parcel of land in town, including I dare say those where most of you live, used to be farms or woods or pastures, and someone owned them and sold them and the market, in that case of the landowner and the person who built the house on it, decided that that was in the best interest of all concern. So anything that happens will happen within the free market. It's about the purest free market we have is real estate. Um, the motivation for the law is, uh, that's being imposed on us is, um, that in general, there is a need for more housing units in the state. And we're responding to that.
I believe that you can respond to that law independent of the law, because what you're trying to do is at the intent of the law. And I think that you can still do that. I think that you can respond to the intent of the law independent of it.
Yes, that, that's clear. I understand what you're making that, you're making that distinction.
Okay. So additionally, on the economic side, if we were to increase inventory, increase the supply and reduce the price, that decreases property value and that impacts me. Well, it, it does because when you increase supply, that reduces the price. When you decrease supply, that increases the price. So by increasing supply, that reduces my property value and hurts my.
And that is what the state, I think, is trying to, they, 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 and, and again, they're not speaking just on us. They're, they're saying broadly, the state needs more housing units.
Correct. So I, I have a question that, that will follow up with that, and it gets to scalability. And so if we are trying to meet the, the law by increasing supply, my concern is a financial impact there of a dump of supply rapidly. And then additionally, the infrastructure being able to support it, I'm, it's somewhat reasonable to believe that our infrastructure can handle a five percent boost in the supply. Theoretically. I just, I just don't know how quickly. And so as, as, um, I apologize.
Mr. Charnes.
Yes. As he was proposing thirty to forty units, that would not be a five percent boost. That might be a two and a half percent boost, easier to absorb. But would it be unreasonable for us to consider limiting the timeline on that as to within the overlay district to have half of the units open one year, of the other half of the units state won't allow that? They won't allow, no timelines?
Like, I, I don't disagree, you know, interesting idea.
In order to scale, is there any, is there any other response as a planning board and as a town that we could have in order to scale effectively rather than dump the inventory rapidly?
We've got two parcels under consideration.
But, but nothing, you know, the, the, the idea is nothing will happen. And frankly, I, I think developers are gonna look for an easier approach with a city that has
Sewerage.
Sewage and, and the ability to build, you know, you go down to the train station, you see the, the developer, the, the two apartment buildings down there. They're, they're, they're successful. They put a second one up. That's an easier development than something like being here, uh, for sure. But
you know, I, I'm not gonna disagree with you. I mean, NAPX property isn't that unattractive. I mean, aside from the two mystery gas tanks that are buried there that we don't know where it is and then a few other things, like there's nothing wildly insurmountable about that property. I looked into it myself in full disclosure, and I'm not pursuing anything there. I was interested in showing eight units on it, but it's just, it's not insurmountable. I, I think that you could, you could easily, like he's proposing doing thirty or forty units, but again, at some point, I get you're saying the waste treatment is, is not doable because it's not gonna fit here, can't do it for four and a half million, lots of variables to consider. But at some point, towns are gonna grow to the point that you need to consider that, and the state may step in and, and help in some way. Is that when we get to ten thousand, fifteen thousand residents? I don't know.
We, we don't have the space.
Fifty years, isn't it?
You just don't have the space for that.
That's still, we, we have the space for eighty-seven units, but here we are.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if we went back in time, forty, fifty years ago, there'd be a similar discussion about, you know, growing the town.
Well, this town has grown slowly from three thousand to.
Yeah.
It's slow.
One of the things that you mentioned, infrastructure, I just need to chime in here. Uh, when, when a development i- is proposed, at some point, uh, there has to be a study on the water system for the development. And as you know, our water system is already strapped. Um, and one of the things they check, which is the real challenge for water systems, can they handle fire flows? And uh, it's, it happens, it's, it's not infrequent that, um, an additional cost to the developer will be to increase the size of the water main for X number of feet ahead of and behind of, all that kind of stuff. And so you know, and, and people are very concerned about traffic. Well, there are modest, that modest increase in tra- we've never seen any kind of nightmare scenario, even though it's easy when we sleep over that sort of thing. Things kinda sorta do happen kinda gradually. People are concerned about kids and the extra cost of kids in the school system. I don't wanna live in a town that has kids. My kids, they're eight-year-olds and lovely. And, and, you know, I, yeah, so I know kids cost money, but I'm very happy to be paying tax dollars to educate other people's kids. I love kids. It's great to have kids in town. Um, people are, people have been concerned about extra police and extra fire. I think, I think you got a handle on it. E- even, even if this happened, let's, let's, let's say that this happened, the town, we passed the law, uh, a year from now, a year or two from now, developers came forward, uh, proposed development and thirty units. I don't think that's gonna represent, I don't think we have to buy a new fire truck for that. I don't think, you know, we have to hire twelve new teachers for that. I don't, I don't think that it's gonna, it, it can't jeopardize the fire response in existing houses. It can affect people's views. It can, it, it can affect property values of the people who bought the property. Sometimes it, it, it goes obviously to what you'd expect, but you don't know. There, there are impacts to, uh, I mean.
I'm interested to know, I'm sorry.
All right, one more.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. So thirty sounds somewhat of a big number because we're talking about it all getting dumped in, but relative to how many units we increase a year, what does that look like? How many units do we increase a year typically?
Fifteen, at best.
Fifteen, so it's.
When, when I first came to town, we were building about sixty new dwelling units per year.
That rattles some frames.
Sixty, uh, uh, probably within the first five years.
Nineteen eighty.
I moved here in, in ninety-five.
So what sorts of concerns did we experience as a town at that point with growth?
It was incremental.
Very negligible.
Negative.
There have been times when we felt like the pace goes too fast. Every time we felt pressure in middle school. Everybody gets upset about the amount of money we spend for the police department. Uh, the fire department always seems to need a new truck and there, you need a new plow for the highway department, but it's just.
I think things like traffic seem to hold to me with five thousand humans moving around in a town, thirty more units.
Although I, I'm about water. I'm very sympathetic to people that are impacted by traffic. You know, I, it's hard for me to pull out on a one thirteen. It's frustrating. You know, and, you know, they, their incremental changes, stoplights showed up, you know.
I, I think my concern is more around, like you already mentioned it, water, because we, we have challenges there where that, the police department has their own struggle with challenges right now with leadership and attracting and retaining talent. That's a concern. Um, and so I would just like to know that we have a good strategy in place going into this.
Thank you. Uh, so I think there was a hand to you already.
Can I add something?
Yeah, yeah, I, I'll do it.
Quick, because I'm still catching up on all this all work. Karen's asking again, and, and Mike might have a question too. So, everything I'm hearing is that complying means you've zoned for eighty-seven. We don't have to, nobody has to build eighty-seven, right?
Correct.
You don't have to do anything.
That's right.
If someone bought the land and zoned it for eighty-seven and decided to make it conservation, that's complying.
Yep.
Okay, that's my question. I just wanna make sure I got that all right.
You can just go to the same.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
That developer, that developer could, uh, put three, four, five, eight houses on it. He thinks that this is too crazy, who the hell knows, whatever. You, you could on, on that land, you could easily put four, five, six. Uh, the same for Dunn. At, at some point, there'd be some more earthwork, you know, but yes, similar idea. We don't know.
In regards to the three developments that are existing that you mentioned, Ocean Meadow and the other two, how many units and what type of units are within those developments?
I can't. Ocean Meadow has about fifty-six, I think, and it's an over fifty-five project.
Are they all single-family?
No, they're all, they're, they're attached to the garage. Almost all attached. Some are two, some are three units. Um, Drake's has thirty, or am I right, maybe four units? Drake's Landing has thirty-odd, thirty-three.
It just kind of proves me to drive through these developments and observe the structures.
Yes, Drake's is a great example. And then Fallsby, off of Wedstone, is also in the thirties, and those are standalone cottages.
And you know, they're all very different. And one of the things that we try to do, because John and I have had long discussions about inclusionary zoning and and, you know, talk about free market principles and inclusionary zoning and all that kind of stuff. Um, these developments have very different characteristics to them and just a different kind of feel to them, uh, as to the residents who chose to buy into them. What, we try in, in modifying our OSRD to get more affordable units by encouraging small units. And by God, they have built a bunch of small units, you know, fifteen hundred square foot kind of things. And we thought, you know, fifteen hundred square feet should be lots less than a three thousand square foot home. Um, much to our dismay, you know, these little cottage units are five, fifty, six hundred thousand dollar units, so. Um, yeah.
Okay, uh, question that I, I will take, there's a couple up here.
Uh, so Gabriel for Harrison. I think to Deb's point, um, I think this is why we have accessory depth dwelling units now in town, to offer more options for people to put in different houses through.
We're trying to find ways.
That seems to be another option to expand affordable housing in future use.
We like that. Do you like that? Do you like the idea of any of you?
Don't wanna see a big development across the street.
But having a neighbor.
Give options.
There, there, I don't know if any, you know, who knows what they get for paper these days, but they've globe had a piece on Sunday about eighty years.
Though I've heard it's, it might be still tough to make it actually happen.
Well, we have a bylaw here. Oh, we have a bylaw. We, we're one of the first communities that passed it last year. It's, it's available. We've had a couple of people interested in it and whatnot, so. Here, yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, Carl Mowley, Main Street.
Yes, sir.
Uh, there's been concerns about infrastructure such as water. I venture to say that NAPX itself uses as much water as a housing development, at least seasonally.
I'll bet you're right. That's a good point.
If you run hoses, two or three hoses, twelve to fourteen hours a day.
They, they may have had a well, I, I don't.
No, they, no.
No, no. Oh, was it? Oh, I, I didn't know.
And then one other, one other question.
Shouldn't throw the well.
If you decide to delay your decision, and then one or both of these properties you've spent two years coming up with sell or get developed otherwise, will you still have time to do a new study and come up with new parcels for the April twenty twenty-five town meeting?
I'm optimistic. Uh, yes, the, yeah, yes, I, I think we would. There's been a couple of interesting ideas bandied out here. I, I'm not sure, you know, where we are, we're all, and I don't wanna get into that debate. Um, but, um, yes, I think there'd be enough time.
On the other hand,
Yes.
they, we did take Dobson and Flinker all around town, and we looked. I mean, you would think with the whole south end of town and having open space, no, it doesn't work. There's reasons why you can't build most everywhere else. The only other parcel that we would like to see developed eventually in the housing is the Mullen property that the town already owns. But these are the two parcels that fit the parameters that we needed to comply with the state.
So Brian says you do have time and you say you don't, you're wasting time.
I, I.
We may disagree from time to time. Gentlemen over here.
Garrett, what's yours? One seventy-eight Main Street. I live directly across from.
No, I didn't hear your name, I'm sorry.
Garrett?
Yeah.
Um, just getting to Mrs. Hamilton's concern about offering diverse housing within town. I, you know, just looking online this past year, there have been three duplexes at its all. Um, all on Main Street, five eighty and seventy.
I know.
Is that gonna, it's, it doesn't matter what you build, you're not gonna create that diverse housing in this town.
Well.
Un- unless it's low income. Because what hairdresser, what gas station or mechanic can afford that?
No, no. It's, it's a fair statement.
So why do you keep trying to say that? You're trying to cut, create diverse housing. This just doesn't exist. That's why I worked my butt off to get here.
I appreciate that, but.
And now I have to live across the street from Mr. Sarkis. Ask him, you've dark submitted plans. What's his price point gonna be? Is it gonna be four hundred thousand, three hundred thousand? I don't think so. He's in it to make money. And I love how he's pressuring you in front of all of us to rethink your decision on pushing the vote because of the consequences and everything he's doing right in front of us.
Oh, wait, wait.
He wants this approved so he can slap as many units on that piece of property as he can.
And make money.
How is it not obvious?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for talking.
That's good enough. Like, this is the biggest fish, fish show I've ever seen.
Oh, sorry if you feel that way, sir. Uh, Mike McCarron has a question.
Mike, can you unmute yourself? Do you know how to unmute yourself?
Yep, hear me now.
There we go.
Okay. Um, just, I wanted to address a couple of things. Um, about the lawsuit, for one, with Milton. Uh, one is particular to Milton in that they're challenging their designation as a rapid transit community. And, um, they have a pretty good case on that because they only have the one little line that goes there. And whatever happens with that is gonna have no impact on West Newbury or, or any other town. The other aspect is that they're challenging the, the idea that the executive office can make all these rules. I don't think that that's gonna pass, but that's, that's their case. And that's what's gonna be decided. Obviously, the validity of the law, I don't think is under any challenge at all. It's just a question of who can enforce it. And then, and now this is speculative. And then, and now this is speculative, but people ask, well, what are they gonna do? Um, you know, to deny grants? I don't think so. I, I, my, my opinion is what would happen is, is that the state would sue a town that's in non-compliance. And they would ask that the court appoint a special master. And the special master would basically hopefully work with the town, but basically devise a plan that complies. And then give its findings to the court and the court would approve it, and that would become the zone. So it would be taken entirely out of the town's hands. Now, that's speculative, uh, you know, this is what some indivi- some attorneys have suggested as a possible result, a possible remedy um, that the state would impose, kind of like when the court orders, um, a master or a commission to re-designate, um, con- you know, congressional district lines, you know, um, to, in order to comply with the constitutional, with state law.
Hey, Mike?
Yes?
We, just tell people what your experience is with the law here so that they know.
Oh, uh, well, obviously, I'm former town council and I've been an attorney for forty years. And actually, I specialized in real estate, and prior to my time, I did a lot of work in, in, um, what was it, development and representing individuals, uh, before many municipalities. And also, I had a kind of a specialized, um, practice in, uh, real estate litigation, uh, mostly before the land court down in, in Boston. So, um, that's basically, you know, a little bit of my curricular vita there, but, uh, yeah, I mean, I, 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 I think that one of the things, by the way, too, and I will compliment the board, I think you did an excellent job on complying with the statute and really doing a good job of addressing the needs of the town, but staying within the spirit of what the law implies. And, um, I missed a little bit of the, your opening, Brian, on the, uh, the letter from the state. But I think that, you know, the state is anxious now to have these towns comply, so there, there may be some benefit in getting approval now. Because once the state gets its teeth into some of these other ones, they might be a little bit more rigid um, in their, in their review. Um, one of the things that concerns me is that, you know, this is a suggestion that you technically comply with the law by designated areas that are very unlikely to be developed in accordance with the law. And, you know, all these, uh, meetings here are recorded. And, you know, a state could come back and say, well, you, you have complied, but you really, you know, it's pretextural. And now we feel that you haven't been in compliance with the law, and therefore, we're gonna go this, we're gonna basically assume that, or we're gonna allege that you have, you're basically a non-compliance. And that the remedy would be to appoint a special master to find properties that could be then built. Um, obviously, they have tried to put that in the regulations when they have, um, you know, exempted, uh, say, for example, town land, um, from being designated as a special zone unless it has already been, you know, approved by town meeting to be, um, used for that purpose. So, I mean, I think the state is looking at the idea, they don't want these cities and towns to basically have, you know, well, make the equivalent of, um, uh, putting the open space, uh, or this, this over, um, with our industrial zone, um, which I assume was not an area that you considered. And, uh, I think the state would have a problem with that. So, uh, those are my, my points, and, um, you know, I, again, I congratulate you, you're doing a great job, so. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mike, appreciate your comments. Um, yeah, I'm sorry, I meant to get back to you before.
Yeah, Zach Thompson, Main Street, I'm in the butter.
Thanks.
Right next to the poppy, poppy circle. Uh, so I just want to say, this might be just for peace of mind, but obviously, the developers in the room, he was on the planning board for ten years. What has been the board's interaction with the potential developer on this project?
Nothing yet.
There's been no interaction with these all?
He's attended some meetings and made some comments.
We learned more tonight than.
Yeah, I thought he was very forthcoming tonight.
Yeah.
Well, I, I can tell you quite honestly, I didn't know that he was looking at this property. Um, yeah.
So you have a.
Well, I would just say that I did reach out to, um, the property of butters of these properties and the property owners, and the property owners came to, to me and I met with, um.
We never received none of us.
Not, not the butters of the property, I meant the property owners, I meant the property, the property owners and, um, at that time, there was, um, the Knapp property, the Dunn property, and several other properties in between that the board was considering making a larger zone for. So, and met, staff met with those folks at that time, which included the owners of the property. Um, some owners got back and some owners didn't. Um, Dunn got back and said they really weren't interested in rezoning or, um, weren't interested in selling. Others were, the Knapps said they were interested in selling, so there has been that level of interaction at the staff line.
Thank you, sir. Uh, before, um, let's see if the board wishes to vote on this, um, any other final questions or? This won't be the last time you've been able to.
They still have a lot of questions.
Sure, sure.
Again, we, be it thirty or eighty-seven units, say it's thirty, the watershed from thirty buildings coming down from that hill onto Merrill Street and impacting the residents on Merrill Street, how can you develop an area for that amount that's gonna negatively impact another area, an existing area?
We have, um, you may not be aware of new stormwater guidelines that were passed recently, the last two years here that, um, significantly enhance the, uh, in the enforceability of a developer's, uh, efforts, uh, on a property to manage water flow and whatnot. Anything over an acre of land disturbance has to go much more stringent reviews, um, with, like, conservation and, uh, and, and the Board of Health and whatnot. Um, and this established state law. You cannot, a development cannot dump excess water without being remedied on, on to somebody else's land willy-nilly. It, it, they, they, there are remedies that to take that developer into court.
Right, if you have thirty, if you have thirty houses.
Wants to have.
First of all, you, and you have thirty houses, that, that water doesn't.
I, 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 I agree with you, I agree, but there's, there's, it's, it, I'm not an engineer, but it is incredible what engineers develop to divert a hole and, and whatnot, um.
Is that a, Brian?
Yeah, despite the, the daily drive property is, is a good one to look at. It, it sits a little bit low and whatnot, but all the water, we've had tons of water in the last two years. The detention system's in there, worked. We haven't had an issue. They get, they get full, but they work. And, and it, it, it is, you know, to, to engineers, but there is an ability, so, John.
And that may very well limit the, the ultimate yield, complying with, with the stormwater management. The local bylaws, our local bylaws very stringent here, uh, goes beyond the state's guidelines. Uh, uh, that may be a limiting factor, that may, for example, uh, cut down on the amount of impervious surface uh, we, we would be able to have built, what we'd be able to build today versus, say, five years ago. So that may, you know, cause it to be a twenty-four unit development, that engineering hasn't been done yet. Right? And, and that is, that's an extent, that's, that's the bulk of the cost
Yes.
of, of the engineering in, in a project like this, is to determine what you can and can't do.
Or water, water being shed into a retention area.
There's detention, there's all kinds of things today, recharge, there's numbers of, of ways that tools you can use to comply with it, but it, it's still, it limits your, your, you know, it's another limiting thing, just like the ten thousand gallons a day and all that, and I have not done any of that analysis yet. It may be that my plans are optimistic, I don't know yet. And I won't know that until I engage, uh, uh, an engineer in form to do that.
That water comes out the roof fast and then, but it can't leave the boundaries of the property faster than it was when it was a field.
It's, it's on a hillside, we're down below the hill.
If, if they have to dig a muck to catch all that water, they take a muck, that's the site development stuff.
Well. I just, I just was curious, I don't know what John's plan was like, but the plan that you had put up at the last meeting showed, I believe it showed all the housing right along Merrill, on that side of the property, which obviously slopes down to them, as opposed to.
I, I think most of the field was open and, and it was up on a, a higher point on the ridge behind the greenhouse, but I could be.
No, it's just.
It was a hypothetical that our consultant drew as a maybe, this is how it could be.
And again, it collects all that water and have to pipe it into some sort of holding area, or it could be.
Also, you, you've talked a lot and, so I'll, I'll only give some new information, sorry.
Okay, quick question, someone, um, is actually for the developer, could the development theoretically actually be enough positive to the watershed? Could it actually help with the water runoff issue?
Occasionally, the, the, the rules are you're not supposed to alter at all. Watershed is, is, is good, which required, you know? So it's, it's to basically make it look like the way it performs today. It should be the same when we're complete with the development. And you're permitted minor changes, but there, you know, all the water that's going that way has to go that way.
So it has to be an ad neutral, yeah, positive for payment.
Yeah, that's right. I can't, I can't correct, I can't limit your, because you could say, I want the water, you know?
So, um, another quick question for the board. Um, obviously, like you said, or spoke plenty of earlier, my question is, why does it feel like the board isn't necessarily considering doing an overlay over an existing community and doing something for a developer? Like if we're for something over Ocean Meadow.
I, 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 no, I, I hear you, um. It certainly didn't come up in the past, and I think it has to do with that we see, you know, a need for a, a diverse housing stock in town. Um, and I'm not saying your idea doesn't have merit, um, and it, with the motion.
About a simple property, like why not spend our time and money on?
This.
It's a separate question.
Uh, to answer your question, um, that's where we have, have been. But with, I, I want to make a motion that we are going to defer this, this spring action and we'll be taking this up through the course of.
And, and I, I second that you, do you feel that you may consider, because it's.
Well, I, I personally don't, uh, I, I mean, sitting here tonight, if I was forced to make a decision, I don't like that idea, but, um, and I don't know how those people would feel about it, but, uh, but it, it, listen, it's, it, yeah, I, 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 I hear you.
It came up in the last meeting and also in the last couple of weeks, there's been not, it's been newscasts about that and several towns doing exactly that. And it'd be more nearly would absolutely comply with that.
Yeah, we can be brought hand over just, during, we can see what, we can watch in the next six months and whatnot.
And now we're being controlled.
One of the things that nobody's talked about tonight, nobody's talked at all about tonight. And I'll just say this very quickly, one of my concerns is the legal liability to the town. If we end up having to go to the courts over something, the state sues us and we have to lawyer off, nobody's talked about what that would cost the town just freaking lawyer fees.
I understand.
And, and, and I, you know, lawyers get what, three hundred bucks an hour or something like that?
Yeah, the deal is approved, yes.
Except for the low end.
Yeah, I.
She was very clear on that, um, I, I'm, I'm just.
Well, yeah, I, I, this is interesting to me, this concept, I'm not sure I agree with it philosophically, but I'm not here to be philosophical. And, and, and over time, I think we'll find, we'll see how these things shake out. I'm skeptical that, that, that Mara Healy, of all people, would be saying like, okay, you come up with a bogus, uh, area to build this, that's fine with me.
It's not her, she's not the one who controls it now.
Right, so, so my, I'll try, so we'll find out, that's all I'm saying, we'll find, we'll see how these things shake out.
Yeah, so my only proposal is that you consider, like, even just the district that you consider, you could even leave it on, on NAPS, just not for the purpose of the state, and you could impose additional restrictions on the developer, things like a timeline or how the development.
Well, we're not allowed to do that, sir.
You, you are.
You, you, that's, that's considered squabbing. Uh, you, that's, you can't do that. You, we, we have to modify our open space, and you should read this, the Open Space Preservation Development in Town Zoning. And, you know, to, to have an amendment about, um, trying to limit a developer's timeline and whatnot. That's the only way you could do it. You couldn't pick that property and say, I want to do something different there. It's, that's illegal. Can't do it. I'm sorry. So, I move to defer the consideration of the MBTH zoning bylaw, um, currently scheduled for twenty twenty-four town meeting to a future town meeting comma. The timing of such to be determined by the resolution of the legal challenge put forth by Milton.
Uh, for a brand amendment?
Yeah.
For special town. You said future town meeting, I would like to add for special town, which.
Yes.
There's a distinction between.
That, that's fine, that's fine, that was my, my intent, because. Do I have a second? I'll accept that.
Oh, yeah, you have, then I'll second, yeah.
Well, uh, if the Milton Court case is settled, let's, I mean, who knows where things, you know, maybe the, the parties come together, um, over August or, or probably not August, but prior to fall town meeting and, and as a desire to take it up in the fall. Um, I, we would have that option based on that motion. I think realistically, it's probably gonna be deferred to next.
Right, excellent, I was just reading the Boston Globe, they, Milton's starting to back, back down.
Well.
Well, we'll see.
We just. So, so I'm, it's, it's not.
But I think the idea is that we think there's enough uncertainty and, and, and there's, there's, there's comments to take in here that we, we will have the time to listen to. Um, and, uh, thus, we can then move forward to hopefully the benefit of the town, uh, before a town, a town meeting presentation, but it will likely be this.
It's an informal discussion here, I'd just like to, to voice my su- support for what Deb was talking about.
Yes.
And, and I guess counter to that, some people, uh, might feel, I, I think it's important that our school teachers and whatnot be able to live in town. My two kids are in their twenties with a new job, they can't.
So, there's an open motion on the floor.
That's what I was discussing, so in, in support of Deb's recognition of Deb's point.
That, that's, right, I, I think, yeah.
I mean, my concern is that I think we have a sound plan, I think it needs some changes. I think we're gonna get further information from the Attorney General and from these lawsuits and from other sources. And then we will weigh those things and as soon as we feel that we are ready, then we'll bring it forward to the town. When we can.
Those voting in favor, Brian Barkey.
Barkey.
Great, great, for those dissenting, Derek Hamilton. Motion carries three, one, and, uh.
Was Tim on or is that a different?
No, Tim is on the trial. Uh, so we're going to, um, this is a matter of legal structure, we will continue the, the, uh, the public hearing, but it's really a, uh, the, the, it's nothing that's gonna come forward in the April town meeting. Because Sue felt we needed to.
I'm not a hearing, not a man for, no, I don't. If we're not.
Oh.
Read for, we don't need to continue.
I, I'm sorry, I just, it's good to hear, Max, okay, okay.
Have a new hearing.
Um, then.
If there is a special town meeting, it will be sent out via email on that.
Yes, and, and I, I would, yes, we have a.
That's so special.
For people to, uh, you can send a request or call Sue, we can put you on a special list.
They just think.
Special town meeting is the annual.
The idea of the, when, when this, when we have a new public hearing about this topic, we want everybody to be informed and to come and talk about it and what we've learned and, you know.
Yeah, well, it'll be advertised and, and, uh, you can always look at the town's website, um, every scheduled meeting is on the calendar.
And the comment was.
People also can request a.
Yes, I was just gonna say, the comment was made, there is a mechanism, um, to sign up for town, uh, you'll get an email and then there's a link to click for the PDF and you would get our agendas and whatnot. That's Sue.
True, Sue, if they would, people contact you if they want to be on that list.
No.
Yeah, yes, you can, so that is, that is another card I love it, you can, if you would like to be notified of a certain, a particular event or issue, you can check in with me and I will keep that list and I will notify.
check in with me, and I will keep that list, and I will notify you individually.
Only because she's a good person. So, I, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close, I'm gonna close the public hearing. I, I, I do wanna thank you all for coming, and, and your good ideas, thoughts, and concerns with town, we all live there.
I think we have to make a motion going.
Yes, we do, he's just.
So, I, I know, so I, I think I said.
I'm sorry.
To close the town, the public hearing.
Uh, do we get to vote on that?
Second, yes.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor, Paul Murphy, I.
Right, I, it's closing here.
I'm closing here, no, or is this?
Yes.
That's fine, that's good, I dare, I like that. Thank you. Three, three, one, who wants to close the public hearing, I guess, that.
This is a great proposal, if I have to be a section.